All right, we will now reconvene to the City Council's special meeting. Are there any final actions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No final action tonight.
All right, we will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, April 25th. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Zepino?
Here.
Challem Charla?
Uh, here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Rorba?
Yes, here.
And Rodriguez?
Here, and just as I'm making a note, Vice Mayor YK Challem Charla will be participating in this meeting via teleconference from the Ferguson Group at 1901 Pennsylvania Avenue, Northwest Suite 700 in Washington, DC. Okay, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, could I just interject with a few words before we get started?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about someone who is very dear to me, our Parks and Recreation Director Lorraine Pajoni. She's retiring Friday after 21 years of service to the city, including almost five years as a department head. Lorraine, could you possibly approach the podium? Please? And Lorraine's family, friends, colleagues, and managers, could I ask you to join her? You can all just stand behind her if you'd like.
Oh, wow. Wow, you have a big family, girls. Oh, this is awesome.
Lorraine, you are extraordinary. You took the reins at Parks and Rec just about the time the world got crazy. Your department was arguably the most affected by the COVID pandemic, and you had no predecessor, no playbook, no manual to turn to for a very strange and unprecedented set of circumstances, but you just dove in. You closed programs and facilities, you dealt with massive budget reductions, you held up your staff emotionally, you came up with COVID-appropriate programming, you took minuscule budget allotments that we doled out to you, and you slowly reopened facilities and programming. Beyond COVID, you have been amazing go-to for me. You took over on Community Service Day. You have, you have at least a dozen special projects and events that you are actively working on, many of which do not wholly rest in your department. You always know the backstory, you always know just who to call, you can always find the magic document I heard someone say something about like 15 years ago. You honor your commitments and your relationships. When you get knocked down, you just get right back up and get to work. I want everyone here to know that even though Lorraine's last day is Friday, this woman has been working night and day, seven days a week, to push major projects over the finish line. She has also been compiling and sharing massive briefings with our incoming Parks and Recreation Director to ensure a smooth transition. I thanked her profusely for that the other day, and she just simply said, "I don't know how to be anyone else," and that's true. Lorraine always has a smile on her face, Lorraine always has a kind word. She left me a note anonymously on my chair one day that said, "You amaze me." I only found out who left it by quizzing another staff member. That little note is still taped to my computer monitor, and it makes me smile, and it lifts me up every single day. That's who Lorraine is. She has built a successful career and a beautiful family with simple authenticity and putting good energy out to the world and just plain being nice, and sometimes those qualities are hard to find these days. Lorraine is a cancer survivor, Lorraine is a warrior, Lorraine is incredibly smart, energetic, and funny, Lorraine is awesome. Lorraine, thank you from the bottom of my heart. We are so grateful for you, we will miss you. Please go have the best retirement ever.
Wow, this is awesome. So, let me see, these are your staff, and where's your family?
Where's your husband closer to you?
Okay, yeah. And then you have some more staff back there, right? Oh, yeah, come on up. They don't want to come on up? All right.
Right.
All right, so this-
Resolution of commendation is for you, Lorraine. Let me, let me read it. It is, um, it is honoring Lorraine Pajoni for her outstanding service to the Folsom community. Whereas Lorraine Pajoni began her 21-year career with the City of Folsom in October of 2001 in the Community Development Department, and in April of 2002 became Lighting and Landscape District Manager. In April of 2009, the Lighting and Landscape Division moved to the Parking Rec Department, and in October of 2018, Lorraine was named by City Manager Elaine Anderson as Park and Recreation Director in recognition of Lorraine's exceptional abilities, dedication, and commitment to Folsom. And Lorraine served on the local organizing committee for Folsom's hosting of the 2014, 2016, and 2018 Amgen Tour of California. Need to bring that back. Acting in a variety of roles, including firing the official stage start gun as the breakaway from cancer representative and overseeing numerous logistical components. And Lorraine calmly and competently oversaw the department through the upheaval, uncertainty, and continuously evolving landscape of the COVID-19 pandemic, including the closure and gradual reopening of park and recreation facilities and services, monitoring safe park and trail use through the park patrol, and deploying public health and safety signage in city parks, city facilities, and other public spaces. And whereas Lorraine successfully achieved five Proposition 218 processes for the landscaping lighting districts, which included five attempts and five corresponding wins. And whereas Lorraine worked with the Hinkle Creek Nature Group and prepared an agreement with the American River Natural History Association for them to operate the Hinkle Creek Nature Center as an actual nature center. And where Lorraine invigorated the Johnny Cash Art Trail Experience with the first art piece installed in 2023 and development of a new marketing sponsorship plan. Whereas Lorraine had a significant role in the completion of Broder Family Homestead Park in 2020 and planning of Benvento Family Park and also Prospector Park, the first park to be built on the Folsom Plan Area in 2023. And whereas Lorraine preparing the funding plan for the Folsom Plan Area Open Space Management Plan, which included maintenance and operations plan for the 1,000 acres of open space and all city-owned streetscapes. And whereas Lorraine provided leadership for many topics and policy-related items heard by the Parking Recreation Commission, including a new park naming policy, evaluating all unfinished, not-yet-started parks for commission review, and prioritization and leading the effort to explore vacant and underutilized parcels. And whereas Lorraine is regularly regarded as a highly respected leader, mentor, and friend. Now I, therefore, I now Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor for the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the citizens of this community, have a genuine honor to congratulate Lorraine Pajoni on her retirement from the City of Folsom and convey the warmest wishes to her and her husband Todd and family, adopted on the 25th, 25th day of April 2018.
Oh, wow, thank you very much. What a, what a big surprise. I did not anticipate this at all. I just, there's no way a leader can be successful without strong family and wonderful staff and the support that I've received throughout my entire career here. There's been many a night where I'm texting my husband, and he probably saves them all, "I'm on my way," and then a half hour later, "I haven't left yet." Did lots of those. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve in this capacity and serve the City of Folsom. It's, I'm not going anywhere. Hopefully, I won't be a pain to anybody in retirement, but I'm definitely looking forward to it. Have two great grandbabies, and this is my son Harrison, one of my youngest sons. Grandbabies live up in Reno, so I'll be spending some time with them, but just a heartfelt thanks to everybody, and thank you, Elaine, for wonderful leadership and guidance through these times, and thank you to the City Council, and really appreciate the opportunity, so thank you, appreciate it.
All right, and just to make an agenda update, we will be moving the consent first before the scheduled presentations. Would the Clerk please call the next item?
And Madam Mayor, if I may, there is an additional information transmittal for item 10, and revised staff report transmittal for items nine and 10. A copy of those documents have been provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you. Would the Clerk please call the next item?
Next item is business from the floor.
Okay, business from the floor is the public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments, public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There is a speaker timer on the podium in front of you that will display the time you have remaining of your three minutes. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have an equal opportunity to address the council. Do we have any requests to speak? We do. Okay, we have two, three requests to speak. The first one will be Scott Rafferty. Good evening, Scott. Oh, Scott's here. Good evening, Scott.
I'm here tonight to brief the community on the hundreds of thousands of dollars of public funds the city is spending to delay compliance with the State Voting Rights Act, the State Fair Maps Act, and the requirement that minority districts have preference for presidential elections. You had until October 25th, 2021, to prepare a district map in sequence. Your city attorney told you exactly what would happen if you didn't meet this deadline. The state court will draw the map with input from my clients and no input from the City Council. You filed thousands of pages in federal court, but no amount of money in statutory court filings is going to allow you to conduct the 2024 election in violation of state law. When YK ran in the 2018 gubernatorial, less than 5% of non-Asians voted for him, and they each had three votes. Then 330 of your constituents signed a petition for district elections. They were from every corner of the city. It had a big blue donkey, but 40% of those signatures were not Democrats. Most of your constituents of all races, of all parties, support the aspirations of the city's growing Asian community, and voters of all races want a dedicated member accountable to their neighborhood. You violated the safe harbor deadline, you violated practically every rule in the Fair Maps Act to protect yourselves. You were forced to enter into an agreement to cease and desist from Brown Act violations, of which there were many. State law requires a preference for scheduling minority districts and presidents for years. This isn't about incumbents, it's about voters. That's how YK got elected in 2020. But Ms. Zepino rejected compromise. She was unwilling to stand for election in 2024. She was unwilling to accept a two-year term. She demanded that you blow a hole in the law, in her words. The council did. You legally scheduled that district for a four-year term. This doesn't just deprive YK of an opportunity to seek reelection, it's about the voters. You have deprived Asians of an equal opportunity to elect any candidate of choice for years to come. Mr. Kozlowski also placed himself above the law. District elections applied to challengers, but he told the voters that he lived in District Three, and then he ran for election from a cement slab in District One. Your constituents want their officials to tell the truth. 18 months ago, the city attorney told the public that he succeeded at getting the case dismissed, which wasn't true. A year ago, he told the Superior Court, "We forfeited the case by failing to serve a document on time." Your new lawyers admit that he actually lied to the Superior Court, which will have consequences. The deception bought time to take this case away just from the state courts, but it will go back, and you will comply with state law in 2024. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Dresser.
Followed by Margie Donovan phoning in.
Good evening, Robert.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm a resident of Folsom. My name is Robert Dresser, and some time ago, we met, Cheryl Davis and I, with the mayor, and very graciously agreed to meet with us, to find out how much money the city has already spent and plans to spend on the lawsuit. And you know, the lawsuit was filed only after the city did not go to by-district elections, but eventually the city did, for whatever reason, vote for by-district elections. And yet, the case drags on, first in Superior Court, and as we move to federal court, and it's still pending before the Ninth Circuit. This costs money, and I don't know how much money has been spent. We did file a Public Records Act request. I think we might have met with you first, Mayor, and we mentioned to you that we didn't think our attorney, Scott Rafferty, not my attorney, because I wasn't a plaintiff, was paid any money, and I think you indicated that you thought maybe he was, and you were going to check it out. And that was a couple of months ago, and we're still kind of waiting for a response. I know you're busy, and it's not a criticism of you, it really isn't, but we would like to know how much money was paid to Scott Rafferty, because usually in these cases, they're settled eventually, and especially after the City Council had already voted to have by-district elections. And why spend many thousands of dollars? We don't know how much, because I don't quite have the answer from the response to the Public Record Act request that we made. And it would be nice to have that answer in real terms that are understandable, and I'd like to find out who on your staff I could meet with, please. I can call you tomorrow and find out.
My apologies, I do have an answer. I actually inquired and do have an answer, but I will, I will respond to you on that tomorrow.
Okay, I would appreciate it. I guess it seems to me, as a resident of the city, and I know that there are a lot of expenses, possibly a looming deficit in the future, don't know, that it might be good for reasonable minds to conclude it's better to settle this matter, a payment of reasonable attorney fees, whatever that might be, rather than to continue to fight it. You may prevail in the Ninth Circuit, Supreme Court, I don't know, but you may not, and it could be even larger liability than was the case when you first decided to vote for by-district elections. In the past life, I used to be an attorney with the state, as General Counselman Agency and Chair of a Board, and it's no fun to be sued, and you can take it real personally. I would just respectfully submit that you try to resolve this, spend the money on police, fire, roads, and other things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margie Donovan, who is online.
You have three minutes. Go ahead when you're ready, and please unmute if you haven't.
Thank you, my name is Margie Donovan, I'm a resident of the city.
We can hear you, Margie.
I'm sorry, let me start over. Hi, my name is Margie Donovan, I'm a resident of the City of Folsom, and I stand before the City Council virtually this evening to thank a number of our staff members. I happen to be blind. When I moved to Folsom in 2008, the city had very little accommodation for people who are blind and visually impaired. Since I've moved here, five other blind or visually impaired people have moved to the city. This is becoming a desirable city for people who are blind and visually impaired. Me being on the telephone tonight is just one example of what Lydia Kanaka, Christine Brainer, and Elaine Anderson made as a reasonable accommodation for those of us that use paratransit, since we don't know when the meeting will be over, and we must schedule definite times. So, thank you to the three ladies for wonderful work. I want to acknowledge Zach Bosch, who is a traffic engineer, and he has worked diligently with me to put in accessible pedestrian signals, which makes it easier and more safe for people with blindness and visual impairment to cross our crazy streets in Folsom. And I can go on and on about what this wonderful city has done. The city is becoming a desirable city for people with disabilities to move to, and I have one, I hate to scorch everything I've said, but one of the issues in the city that must be addressed and resolved, I've been working with our IT department for a couple of years now, our website needs a lot to be desirable. We cannot sign up for activities on our website through Parks and Rec, or the City Center, or anything else due to the inaccessibility of it. And I hope that this is something that the city will take very seriously so that we can integrate better into this community. And again, in closing, I thank all the members of this city who continue to deal with all my requests on behalf of people who are blind and visually impaired in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. Are there any other requests to speak?
I have no other speakers.
Okay. Would the Clerk please call the next item?
Next item is scheduled presentations.
Ms. Kanaka, can we take consent first?
Yes. Consent calendar is going to be moved before the scheduled presentations tonight.
All right, I would like to pull number eight.
And I'd like to pull number seven, please.
I'll move items six and nine through 14.
Oh, YK?
Mayor, I would like to pull number nine.
Number nine, okay.
I second your motion.
Let me amend it first, item six, and then items 10 through 14.
All right. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Akino?
Yes.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, number seven?
Item numbers.
If Marie could just maybe come up, I just have a quick question, a couple of quick questions. This is about the edible food recovery program, and Marie, I'm just wondering, how is it determined which restaurants and other agencies and events get put onto Tier Two?
So, Tier Two is based on the size of the restaurant. I believe it's 250 seats or greater, so we don't have a lot of Tier Two. I don't remember the exact number, but we don't have many restaurants that fall into that category, and so it's all defined within SB 1383, and it's all very large food providers.
Got it, okay. And so have the, for example, the restaurants on this, Mercy Hospital, Folsom Pro Rodeo, Renaissance, all the prisons, have those been, have they been notified that they're going to be subject to this Food Recovery Act?
They've been notified through a letter, but we'll do additional notifications.
Okay, and I believe a task force is being created to figure out how to implement this part. Are we asking some of these folks to be represented on that?
Um, I'm not aware of-
Oh, Mark, didn't you mention a task force to me?
Good evening, Councilmember Akino, I believe I was referring to the, the group that's being formed through this resolution by the, the member agencies.
Got it.
Apologize if I use the term task force.
No, that's okay. I mean, well, it seems like we ought to have input from these folks, because I don't see how this is workable at all, but it seems like, you know, the people who are supposed to, were supposed to be recovering food from their establishment should be involved in figuring out how to make this workable.
Yeah, we'll be reaching out to them. There's not a large number of them, so we'll work directly with them. That's also part of the agreement with all of the other cities in the county, is that we would hire a manager who would come in and manage that piece of it and help develop the program, so it would be a unified program throughout the entire region, not just individual jurisdictions on their own.
Okay. If nobody else has any questions, I can move adoption of resolution number 11017.
Second.
Okay, would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Akino?
Yes.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes. I pulled number eight, resolution 11024, because I have to say that when this came up in the summer of 2021, I may have been very arrogant in saying, "That just sounds really stupid." I didn't say it, but I thought it, that we would have to put down in writing what was given. And I remember at the time, I thought, you know, I had started coming to City Council meetings in 2000, I think it was late 2017, and I just started coming for, really, it was for fun, because as a business owner, I thought so many policies that are created, you know, impact the business community. And I always appreciated how the council really worked, and so when we went through this, I, I thought, "Well, it just seems so dumb." What I have since recognized is that as a fairly newer council, writing, having those things written down in a document is very valuable, and so I just want to say to the individuals who wrote it or who put it together that I just, I thank you for this. I think it's very helpful to understand what the expectation is of each other, and just the treatment of council staff, staff to council, and so with that, I will move resolution number 11024.
Can I make a little edit here? As this was my baby, I won't take your comments personally, Mayor. Normally, I would just do this with the Clerk, but since you've pulled it, I'm going to go and ask, and Lydia, I'll send this to you. Under characteristics of an effective council, I'd like insure to be insurers, commit to be commits, and under characteristics of an effective council member, avoid to be avoids. So, I'll send those to the Clerk's office, so-
We'll integrate those, thank you.
If you'll accept that amendment, I will second your motion.
Okay, and would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Akino?
Yes.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Next item.
Mayor?
Oh, the next item is number nine that was pulled. Vice Mayor Challem Charla?
Yes, Mayor. This is, I'm so sorry, I'm not there, but in all fairness, I'm there. Lorraine, or Chad, you know, anyone else, you can answer this, but before I go there, I know you guys, I was not there, I, I heard all the great things Lorraine has done for our city. I want to echo those once, one more time. This is my opportunity, since I'm not there in person. Lorraine, thank you so much for everything you have done for our city. I know parks and trails are a wonderful amenity to our town, and everybody tries this. Of course, your credit is true, Mr. Dahl, they have started, but you run with Paratran. Once again, I'm clapping from here, thank you for your wonderful work.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Challem Charla, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Absolutely. And on this one, I was going through agenda review, I just want to give you some compliments on the way our Parks and Rec team has done. There is a new project coming up, a new park coming on south of Wixi, Mangini Ranch Park, and when they issued the RFO for the bidder to bid on it, and the bidder, Usai, offered intensive bids, the wonderful thing our City Parks and Rec team has done, they invited all those bidders to the site to make sure the scope has written on the document and looking at the site, they totally understand the project they are going to take up and the restaurants they are going to come back with a more accurate pricing. With that, I think we have a great fight here. The only thing, Lorraine, are bad, the work you have done is not visible in your analysis section. I request maybe in the future, if we have done the bidder conference and explaining all those, it would be nice to describe that analysis.
Vice Mayor Challem Charla, it was a little bit hard to understand, is, are you, it sounded like you complimented us on having the site visit with all the bidders, is that correct?
Yes.
And then was there a question about something not being visible or not being analyzed?
The work you have, yeah, the work you have done is not visible in the analysis section.
Councilmember Challem Charla, this is Brad Nelson, Park Planning Manager. I believe what you're mentioning is that the, we did, so bids were publicly issued at the end of February, and then mid-March, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting, which required all of the general contractors who were considering providing a bid, it required them to attend an onsite meeting at the park, and so then we had our list of potential bidders there, and then the bids were due at the end of March. So, is that what you were referring to in terms of the analysis? That is not included in the staff report, the pre-bid meeting, that's correct?
Thank you. The site tour, because you did it onsite, because they know what they are entering into rather than blindly sitting on that.
Correct.
And the second, thank you, Brad, thank you, Elaine. Elaine, I was talking to Brad on the agenda review, and he was able to get that piece together. And the second one is, I know we are putting 10-person contingency, which is a pretty big project. The 10-person contingency is almost like $860,000, because this project is almost $8.6 million. Do we really need to keep that- Do we really need to keep that much contingency? I know recently, about six or seven years ago, we have built Economy Park. If you can give us some updates, how much contingency we have used in Economy Park?
Sure. So the question is how much contingency we had for Economy Park and how much was used. Economy Park was bid in August of 2016. The low bid was 4.86 million. It's a similar sized park in that it's 12 acres to Prospector Park. The year was 2016. The contingency was $486,000. So the total construction agreement was for $5,346,000. We spent right around about 5.225 million, so we did not use about 121,000 or so of the contingency. So the contingency was used for, it's really used for unforeseen conditions, weather delays, design changes, and things like that. In terms of the, why we have the 10% contingency, the Folsom Municipal Code 2.36.080, Word of Contracts, Subparagraph B, it talks about the contingency appropriation shall be included in the total project appropriation for all construction contracts awarded by either the city council or city manager. The contingency appropriation shall be 10% of the construction contract amount. So that's where the, where the 10% comes from. Does that answer your question?
Yes, Brad, thank you. I think you answered my question of both. I don't have anything else, but I still want to give you those for reaching out to so many vendors and bringing so many bids and staying very close to the estimate asked for this project. Thank you.
I'll move adoption of resolution number 11025.
Second.
I'll second this one.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalantchirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Ro-Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Now we will move on to scheduled presentations. The first presentation is resolution of commendation honoring Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, dedicated service in 2022.
We are running a little bit behind schedule, so thank you very much for your patience. Is this Lieutenant David Brock coming up? Any of you are welcome?
Oh, I think they should all come up.
Want all to come up?
Yeah. I mean, look at those colors. That's great photo.
Chief Casana, you want to come down? Or you're taking the picture? Okay. So this is a resolution of commendation honoring the Community Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as CERT, for their dedicated service in 2022. Whereas the CERT volunteer program plays a key role in the city of Folsom's goal to protect and advance community safety, and whereas CERT volunteers work closely with the Folsom Fire Department and help provide assistance on incidents and trainings, and whereas last year, 43 CERT members volunteered 3,900 total hours and assisted in 418 activations, and whereas CERT staffed cooling centers in Folsom during the heatwaves in June, August, and September of 2022, they also assisted with the severe weather conditions in December of 2022, and whereas CERT supported our neighboring communities by assisting incident management teams on the rice fire, the electric fire, and the mosquito fire, and whereas CERT provided firefighter rehabilitation for several fires in Folsom and supported the Folsom Fire Department during captain training exercises, EMS testing, and burn drills. So therefore, on behalf of Mayor Rosario Rodriguez, the city council, and residents of this community, we do hereby thank the Community Emergency Response Team for being an extremely valuable asset to the Folsom Fire Department and honor them for their dedicated service in 2022, passed and approved this 25th day of April 2023.
I was told there was a vote, and I was elected to say something. I was going to point out that we have about a quarter of our, our team here tonight. We're about 45 people. On, on behalf of the team, thank you very much for this recognition. Thank you to the Folsom Fire Department for the excellent leadership and training that they provide to us so that we can do the things that we do. Our mission is expanding. We're, we're learning more, we're doing more, and we have a academy coming up end of August, so we're looking for more people to come and join us in this great mission.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming May 21st through May 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week, and May 17th, 2023, as City Works Day.
I'd like to invite a couple of my, my favorite staff members from Public Works to come up and accept the proclamation our behalf, Jennifer Teo and Lindsay Taylor.
And you, Mark.
I'll be up later.
Well, I'm going to hand this to you.
Oh, all right.
So Mark Rockevan, our Public Works Director, Jennifer Teo, and Lindsay Taylor will accept the proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming May 21st through May 27th as National Public Works Week, and May 17th as City Works Day. The proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming 21st, I already read that, so we don't need to go through that. Whereas public work services provided in the Folsom community are an important part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of our residents greatly depends on the operational services of public work systems and programs such as traffic engineering, street maintenance, storm drainage, solid waste collection, recycling, and the management of hazardous materials. And whereas the planning, design, construction, and operation of these programs depends upon the dedicated skills of the city of Folsom staff, and whereas the Folsom City Charter and the Folsom Municipal Code encourages broad, informed public participation in civic affairs, and whereas the city of Folsom desires to share information with the public about municipal operations, and whereas City Works Day is designed to inspire residents to discover the city of Folsom's wide variety of services and programs, community members are invited to attend the May 17th City Works Day event at City Lyons Park. Now, therefore, I and Ro-Rorba, on behalf of the city council and mayor of the city of Folsom, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week, and May 17th, 2023, as City Works Day in the city of Folsom, and to recognize the contribution that Public Works and other city departments make daily to the health, safety, and comfort of our residents. Proclaimed this 25th day of April 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Oh, sorry. Oh, do you want to speak?
Presentation.
Oh, presentation. Jen's going to sing.
We just have a short presentation. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to share with you about our favorite event of the year, City Works Day. I'm going to give you a quick recap of last year's event, City Works Day 2022. It was a fantastic educational community event, especially thrilling because it was our first year back after two years of cancellations due to the pandemic. City Works Day has been held for the past 20 years, and it was sorely missed by the community during its absence. Last year, an estimated 2,000 people attended. Something new was our first annual citywide coloring contest. We were thrilled to receive 777 entries. 21 winners were chosen and their artwork displayed at City Works Day. The 2022 coloring entries were converted to the mosaic displayed here to your left.
Nice.
Each of the squares is a submission that we received. We think that it showcases the community's unity and wanting to make our world a healthier place. We are very excited to be bringing it back again this year. As public servants, City Works Day is a great way to interact with the community and educate them on how we protect, serve, build, and maintain the city that we love.
Okay, so this year's event will be held in just over three weeks, on Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, from 9:30 a.m. till noon at Lyons Park, just right over there. Staff members currently are busy preparing for the different booths. We have water trivia, we have a crowd favorite of Kirby, the, Kirby the Robot, the voice actually just left the meeting, so. The very popular Zoo Dosent booth, but that one, you will have to come yourself to know why that is so popular. We have our popcorn booth with color-changing cups, plus all the favorite city vehicles, so, such as fire, PD, and the PD mounted unit. So this is a big event. There's about 50 staff members that are going to be working 29 booths and attractions. Like Jen said, this is one of our favorite events. We just love interacting with the kids that come out. We have 651 confirmed students coming, and we like to think that hopefully we inspire some of them to possibly go into public service one day. So, that being said, next up, we have our director, Mark Rockevan, to talk about a fun new attraction that was added this year.
Marjorie, can I ask that you mute your phone? We're getting feedback.
Thank you, Jen and Lindsay. The, this year, for the first time, we're working with the local chapter of the American Public Works Association on a brand-new event that they've called Road EO, Road hyphen EO, which will be held down at the rodeo grounds. This event is twofold. One, it's an opportunity for local equipment operators to get some training and, and test out some new equipment. But the fun part begins at 11 o'clock in the morning, when those operators will then go through a series of skills competitions as teams to demonstrate their ability with the equipment. And so it'll be a nice opportunity to see the Public Works, the Folsom Public Works Department, and the Environmental and Water Resources Department bring in the gold and the silver, in that order, by the way. And I do have a short video to better describe how this event should go, if I can launch this. Here we go.
Back with the rodeo, it's where the banner operators from every utility company come, demonstrate their operations, just to see more friendly competition.
This equipment is not easy. You can mess up very easily. It takes a lot of patience, a lot of control, to do what everybody up here is doing with these different obstacles and maneuvers. It's very dangerous. You can't, you can't get hurt if you do the wrong maneuver and hurt somebody.
This is my first competition. I win first. I was the first person to use this piece of equipment, so I was not familiar with some of the controls, so I had to learn really quick how to use it, but I think I handled it pretty well.
I was very nervous, because I felt like I'm, I'm good at my job, I'm good at what I do, but compared to everybody else that I've never seen do or done, I didn't know where I stood in perspective to them.
I think it's about 50% finesse, 50% actually power. You got to learn how to operate certain weather conditions, what utilities that are in the way. I think that's amazing. It's a little more work than what people think it is. It's more than being a stick boy. You got to actually operate.
We spent the last couple days, over the last couple weeks, back in the back by the barn, picking up footballs, dropping them in fans, picking up some ropes, put them in the different pipes, just trying to get ready for what we was going to see up here.
MSD is done well today. I think everybody done great, very few hiccups at all. I think as a team, I think we really held them down for MSD.
I had a real good time out here. I had a real good time training, everybody hanging out real cool, down to earth.
I may not be the best operator, but I'm my favorite.
That's funny. That's awesome.
So, Mark, will the public be able to, will be able to get close enough to watch that competition?
That, that's the plan, that it will be down at the rodeo grounds. It is set up so that the public can, can view it from either the stands or from around the edges of the event.
Yeah, it'd be really fun. I'm going to reach out to the school board president, because it'd be fun to see if we get some high school kids out there. You know, not everybody needs a college degree, and maybe some of them would be inspired by this to go into, you know, one of the trades. So, thank you.
Great thought. So, thank you, Councilmember Ro-Rorba, for your description of National Public Works Week. You know, I can't say enough about our staff that go out in the dead of night to fix emergency repairs, disaster conditions, extremes of heat and cold. They, they really do so much to keep this a safe and desirable community to live in. And I should acknowledge that, you know, we do have another department, Environmental and Water Resources, that, that also performs a lot of the same functions, and I, I don't want them to feel slighted just because it's named after my department.
Are you suggesting they're almost as good?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I believe. No comments, sir. A few years back, we worked with our communications team on a, a video to describe what the Public Works Department does for the community. This is an abridged version, it's, it's only about a minute long. The extended edition director's cut is available online in case anyone's interested, but allow me to share this, this brief video with you, please.
In a well-run city, it is easy to think that making everything work smoothly is an effortless endeavor. We're so busy in our day-to-day lives that it's easy to assume that our roadways, bridges, traffic signals are simple and self-rental. We forget about our trash as soon as it gets put out on the curb, we forget about swamp water as soon as it goes down the drain, and that keeping our city attractive and well-groomed just happens. But it doesn't. It actually takes a whole department, specifically the Folsom Public Works Department, to make it all come together. We take pride in roads, bridges, traffic signals that operate efficiently to keep the public safe. We take pride in removing waste from our community and keeping our water waste pollution free. We take pride in keeping our city attractive and well-groomed. The Folsom Public Works Department and its dedicated team work hard every day to help make Folsom work for you.
We are Folsom Public Works! Woo!
That was a famous voice on there, I can't pinpoint it, though.
Yeah, we have.
Great job, Mark.
We tried to get Morgan Freeman to do the voiceover, but once he heard my, my first take, he said he couldn't beat that. And lastly, I have for you some good news, that the local chapter, the Public Works Association, has selected Brian Reed and Marie McKeith, both to be Managers of the Year for the local chapter. I nominated both, hoping that I'd get at least one of them to win, and lo and behold, they, they were both so excellent at their job, they both have received the award, or they will be receiving the award on, at a dinner on May 17th, the same day as City Works Day. So this is just further proof that not only does it take a great team to make me look good, it actually takes an award-winning team to make me look good. So with that, we hope to see you all out there on May 17th for City Works Day and/or for the rodeo. Thank you very much.
Great job, see you then, before then. Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is presentation by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District.
All right, let's see if I can figure out how to get this in. Thanks a lot, you know, but I got to find the presentation first. There we go. Perfect. All right, yep, we're all set. My name's Gary Goodman, I'm the district manager for Sacramento Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District. Appreciate the opportunity to come out and talk to you a little bit about what we're going to be facing for this upcoming season. We're anticipating a very busy one, obviously, with the amount of water that we've received over the last just few months, and a lot of the places that we normally have seen as, as dry have a lot of water in them. dry have a lot of water in them. Of course, now with the, the summer approaching, quickly approaching warmer weather, that's gonna mean quite a bit more mosquito activity for us. So, our goal, we cover all of Sacramento and Yolo County, our main office is based down in Elk Grove, we also have a satellite office in Woodland, so we're a bi-county agency. And essentially, our, our job is to try to provide vector control to help protect public health from vector-borne diseases. And a vector is something that transmits disease from one to another, and so specifically, our largest disease that we have in our area is West Nile virus, and it is actually a bird disease, so it's carried by birds. A mosquito bites an infected bird, picks it up, and then bites another bird, passes it on, or bites a human and passes it on. So our goal is to try to protect public health from vector-borne diseases. Other, other vector-borne diseases that we have in our area are from ticks as well, Lyme disease, something else that we monitor for on a regular basis to try to help educate the public on the risks associated with it. So we use what we call an integrated mosquito management approach, and this kind of has five components to it. One is public information, we have a very active public information officer, and especially in the last few weeks, if you've been watching the news, you've probably definitely have seen a mosquito control story on the news, we had Channel Ten out at our facility early this morning, so we've been getting a lot of newsworthy articles associated with the recent rains. But we do a lot of public events, we have a school program, we do advertising, all of those types of things, as we start to approach the summertime, to make sure that we can educate the public as to the risks associated with vector-borne disease, and the tools that they can try to help use to protect themselves. Then the second component is what we call surveillance, and this is, for us, essentially setting traps throughout our district, throughout Sacramento and Yolo County. In our area, we have about twenty-three different species of mosquitoes, not every mosquito transmits disease, but we want to know what the populations are doing in any one particular area. Are they larger in, at this time of year than they were last time, or what type of species are we getting? And of course, in that surveillance, we bring them back to our, our office in Elk Grove, we separate them by species and by sex. We want to test female mosquitoes, only female mosquitoes bite, they're looking for the protein in your blood so that they can produce the eggs, male mosquitoes only feed on nectar, they don't bite. So in our surveillance program, we also test for virus activity, specifically West Nile virus among St. Louis and Western Equine encephalitis, we have a couple of different diseases that we test for. Then we have a biological control program, right in the middle of the screen there, you can see those little tiny fish, those are called a Gambujia finnis or mosquito fish. We have the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country, we have twenty-three ponds dedicated towards breeding these tiny fish, and we plant over three thousand pounds of fish per year in just Sacramento and Yolo County. So we plant them in places like rice fields, wetlands, backyard pools that are not being maintained, all of those types of areas that these types of mosquito fish will, will help us reduce the mosquito population. Then we have an ecological management department, we may challenge your Public Works Department, we have a backhoe and a dump truck, we'll see what we can do in terms of setting up a friendly competition. But we work with landowners like U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and just general farmers out in areas, to be able to try to help, help them identify where areas where they're breeding mosquitoes on their property, and is there, is there work that we can do to try to help reduce? If we can reduce that standing water that's on their property, then we can reduce the mosquito population as well. And then we get finally into what we call chemical control, and essentially, this is our technicians going out on a daily basis, and they're looking for mosquito breeding. And mosquitoes breed in what we call standing water. So it's very easy for us to see places like rice fields or wetlands, you see open land, you see a lot of water with vegetation interface, that's gonna be perfect breeding ground for mosquito. Some of the bigger challenges are whether they're in people's backyards, and those are some of the issues that we face. So as you can see, here's some of the sources that we have, again, you see the, the rice, rice fields up in the upper right, the wetlands in the upper left, but all of these other sources are in people's backyards, and that's difficult for us to be able to find, I can't see back there. So we really rely on the public to be able to try to give us information, are you being bothered by mosquitoes, do you know of a neighbor that maybe has a green pool, are you seeing standing water? Give us a call, we typically come out within twenty-four hours, if not same day, by a technician that's already in that area, so that we can try to take care of this problem as quickly as possible. So, this wet winter definitely is going to mean a busy mosquito season for us, a record amount of rain, a lot of sources, especially as we start going into people's yards with service requests, we're seeing a number of things that have filled up, but just some of those low areas that we've got in some of our agricultural and, and rural areas, a lot of places that are having water that haven't had water in years past. A number of our vernal pools, a number of our wetlands, just have more water than that's there, and, and it's not going to go away, and especially with the snow melt that's gonna come down, it's gonna continue to feed some of those sources of water. So we're anticipating a very, very busy season as it relates to mosquito abundance, and then of course, that possi, that means the possibility of increased virus activity as well, the more mosquitoes you have, that can also be a challenge. So, West Nile virus is our main focus in terms of distinct public health disease that we have, and so, last year, this is the West Nile virus activity in California, there were two-hundred-and-eight reported human cases in California, over three thousand mosquitoes that we tested positive for West Nile virus, and so, the challenge here that we have is that these cases tend to be severely under-reported, because the symptoms of West Nile virus start with flu-like symptoms, which of course, over the last few years, we've become very aware of those types of symptoms. And so, a lot of times what happens is people may get West Nile, they never actually go to the doctor, it never gets diagnosed, and so, the ones that actually get diagnosed, that get reported to, to the state, these two-hundred-and-eight cases, the CDC estimates that there's another thirty to seventy unreported cases of people that are symptomatic. So you're really talking about tens of thousands of people that are stricken with West Nile every year in California. And so, we've had numbers significantly higher than that. A number of years ago, if you look at 2017, you had over five hundred, but that means sixteen thousand to thirty-seven thousand people actually got West Nile virus and exhibited some symptom associated with it. So, it can be very serious, and we want people to be aware of that, and that there's things that they can do to try to help prevent. So, here's a map generally of Folsom, last year, this is, we did not have a lot of cases in Folsom, you guys do a great job, so pats on the back to you. We typically don't find a lot of West Nile virus activity in Folsom, which is a little bit strange, we have a lot of, a lot of traps and surveillance and work that's being done out here, but we tend not to pick up a whole lot of virus activity, which is good for your neighborhood, but you can see just neighboring to you, just to, to the west, we have picked up other, either dead birds that we've tested positive for West Nile, or mosquito samples that have tested positive, so, just a few miles away. So it is very possible that we can get it here within your jurisdiction, but I, so I don't want people just to relax, and we'll continue to monitor that, but historically, we don't have really high virus activity in Folsom. Another concern that, recently, that we've identified specifically, and as I mentioned, we have about twenty-three different native species of mosquitoes in our area, but we're starting to get what we call these invasive mosquitoes, an eighties egypti and eighties alpictus, this is the yellow fever mosquito and the Asian tiger mosquito. They're very small, kind of dark with striped legs mosquitoes, these are not supposed to be in our particular area, they're endemic to South America, Central America, Mexico, obviously in Asia, and they're starting to make their way into California and become established. And the concern that we have with these particular species is that these are very efficient vectors of more exotic diseases like dengue, chikungunya, Zika, those types of diseases that we could potentially have similar to what we have with West Nile. And so, we want to be aware if people are seeing these types of mosquitoes, and one of the, the telltale signs is the fact that they like people, they like to be around homes, and they tend to bite during the day, and they tend to try to get into your home. So if you're being bothered by mosquitoes in your house, they're very, very small, you know, we want to know about that. So give us a call, we, again, we typically come out within twenty-four hours, we can set traps, or at least look around to see if these particular mosquitoes are present or prevalent in the area. We've yet to detect it in Folsom specifically, but we have detected it in other areas in and around the Sacramento area. So this is just since 2019, our first detection of this particular mosquito, eighties egypti, was in the Citrus Heights area, which is just neighboring to you, and since that time, we've seen pockets scattered around Sacramento and Yolo County, specifically of these particular invasive mosquitoes, mosquito species. And so, we want people to be aware of that, and again, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, give our district a call specifically so we can come out and do some surveillance and give you some tips as to how to try to reduce your risk. So with that, I do want to mention Craig Burnett, who has been, been on our board for forty-five years, representing the city of Folsom. He's been on our board longer than some of our staff have been alive, I'm sorry. And prior to that, he actually spent four seasons as a seasonal at the mosquito control district, so he's one of few people that actually loves mosquitoes for some reason, but. Craig, you have anything else to say?
Yeah, just, just wanna thank the city council for reappointing me almost every four years, I think last year, nobody applied except myself, and I enjoy the work, enjoy working with the district, and I'm really proud of the work they do, everything from looking at invasive mosquitoes that are in the bottoms of empty tires, or pots, you know, like flower pots, because they're everywhere. And the other night, I was at home, and they were buzzing in my ear, and I live in the north part of Folsom, over there in Valley Pine, so I went out and got my mosquito repellent, it was out of date, and I said, oh my God, I don't want to try to use this. So, at our meeting today, I picked up the mosquito wipes for preventing mosquitoes, and the district has them, little things like that, we can get those for the Public Works Department when they're doing outside activities, especially at night, or around the fireworks time, so those are all available, and again, thanks for giving me the opportunity to serve you, and we got a wonderful community, and I enjoy working with the district and all the city staff that I've been in contact with over the years. So thank you.
Thank you, we do have a wonderful community, and thank you for your service for forty-five years. That's awesome. Forty-five?
Forty-five.
That's awesome.
And, and I'll just reiterate, we, you know, we do have these repellent packets, we buy these things by the pallet, so we've got tens of hundreds of thousands of these things. So if there are events that you guys have in the evening time, specifically as we started getting into warm weather, national night out, or the fireworks, whatever, give us a call, we'll be more than happy to deliver them, we have information packets that we can hand out as well, just to, to try to educate the public as to what the risks are, and what are the simple things that they can do to try to help prevent them.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
And by the way, it's great to see you come and visit us every year.
Right, great.
I don't know why, but this, this is one of those presentations that always stands out.
I appreciate that, although, everybody leaves.
It's the striped flags.
We speak mosquitoes, and everybody leaves the building, so, thank you very much. Again, if you have any questions, please give us a call, we'll be more than happy to help out.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is presentation by housing expert on new housing laws.
Steve, you're branching out?
I am, I am. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Member of the City Council, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. As many of you know, there have been many significant, ongoing, and complicated changes in state law pertaining to housing, the housing development. Those changes have implications for cities who have traditionally enjoyed local control over housing development, including us, the city of Folsom. I am pleased to introduce statewide-recognized premier housing law expert Barbara Cows of the law firm of Gold, Farben, and Littman, to go over some of the important changes in housing law that have significant implications for all of us here in Folsom. Before becoming an attorney, Barbara worked for thirty years as a planner, planning director, community development director, and an assistant city manager with her last post at the city of Sematell. She has numerous published appellate court decisions, and is a frequent speaker at conferences, including the League of California Cities, American Planning Association, Housing California, and others. So with that introduction, ladies and gentlemen, Barbara Cows.
Good evening, Barbara, welcome.
Good evening. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much for having me. So, so I've been asked to describe the major state housing laws, and as you know, there's been a flood. Since 2017, over a hundred laws have been passed related to housing by the legislature. In trying to implement those, even those of us who, the attorneys and planners, this is our career, we find them very complicated, often poorly drafted, and sometimes contradictory, and very hard to administer. So, even though this presentation is fairly long, it's really still just a general presentation about the laws, and if you get a specific project, you know, obviously, there may be more details. So, I've divided the section into four parts with time for questions after each part, so that, don't bore you, talk to you for, for too long. So, the, the first part, we're, that I'm gonna talk about, the major, is the Housing Accountability Act. And the point of that, which I'll show you, is to really make it difficult to deny housing projects. Then I'm gonna talk about a number of laws which essentially replace local planning with state regulations. Then I'll talk about a number of approvals that are, quote, ministerial or by right, meaning that very limited discretion, and the, pretty much the staff makes the decision. And then at the end, I'll talk a little bit about the consequences of non-compliance. So, first of all, the Housing Accountability Act. So this, when the legislature started to adopt these laws in 2017, here's what they said the intent was. They said the intent of the Housing Accountability Act was to curb the capability of local government to deny housing projects, or reduce the density, or render infeasible housing development projects. And then they added that the intent had not been fulfilled, needing the, meaning that they needed to do more, which is what they did do. So, some of the key provisions, first of all, what's a housing development project? It includes not only a project that has two or more units, but it also includes a mixed-use project, one that includes normally housing and some kind of commercial, where, where at least two-thirds of the square footage is residential, it also includes emergent, transitional and supportive housing, and it includes emergency shelters as well. I, I think now that, when you're reviewing planning projects, kind of have them in two buckets. One is projects that are housing development projects, because they have their own special laws, and then with office, retail, whatever, hotel, city still maintains its usual discretion, but the legislature has really tried to limit discretion for housing projects.
Sorry, just a quick question, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
So the transitional or supportive housing, sorry, right there.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate on what that means?
Sure, so transitional housing is housing where it's intended to be a transition, usually from homelessness, where people stay for at least six months. Frankly, transitional housing is much more like, it's just like, normally it's like normal apartments, except that it, they're, they're run as in transition, and there's some social services. Supportive housing is housed, there's a number of definitions of it, but typically, it's, it's for people who are either homeless, or, or at risk of homelessness, and offers a variety of services to those people. I would say people in supportive housing are probably have more disabilities than people in transitional housing.
Thank you.
Which has, which has less, fewer services. So what are some of the key provisions that have been adopted over the years? First of all, any applicant for a housing project can submit something called a preliminary application that freezes the rules that are in effect at the time they submit the preliminary application. For the preliminary application to be effective, it, there's a list of what needs to be presented in state law, includes a site plan, some elevations, information about the number of affordable units, some information about environmental features like wetlands, but it's kind of like an abbreviated planning, planning application. If they manage to submit everything that's on the list in state law, then the city's fees, and all the ordinances, and all the standards are frozen as of the date that they submitted that application. For the application, for the preliminary application to remain in effect, the applicant has to submit what you'd call a real application within a hundred eighty days to the city. And then, if the application that's submitted isn't complete, and the city sends a letter saying your application's not complete, then the applicant has to complete the application within ninety days after receiving a letter from the city. So there is at least some kind of a timeline. The applicant, though, can also change the project by up to twenty percent of either the number of units or the square footage, and the preliminary application remains in effect. Also, they can invoke density bonus law, which I'll get into later, which can allow an increase in density of fifty percent, and they can still rely on that preliminary Another key provision that was adopted in the last few years is that, once the application is determined to be complete, the sta- is determined to be complete, the staff has to tell the applicant in a short time, in either 30 or 60 days, 30 days if the project has 150 units or less, 60 days if it's a bigger project, if in any way the project is inconsistent with any city standards at all. And if the applicant is not notified that something is inconsistent with some city standard or law, setback, height, whatever, it's, quote, deemed consistent with the city's policies, even if in fact it's not. Another provision, which is a little hard to parse out, but I'll explain it in the context of a case later, is that the projects assume to be consistent with your local regulations if there's a substantial evidence that would allow a reasonable person to assume consistency. So if someone can make a good argument, you could view it that way, that the project's consistent with one of your standards, then the court is supposed to find that in fact it is consistent, even if a good argument can be made the other way. And a last change that was made is that if the project is consistent with the general plan, but the zoning is not consistent with the general plan, let's see, let's say that the general plan says that residences are allowed in an area, but the zoning, for some reason, is still commercial, the developer can apply, can propose a residential project, and does not need to ask for a rezoning. Now, that seems a fairly clear example, but we've seen, my clients have experienced people making, what I, for instance, one example is a city that has a general plan that has a maximum density. The zoning allows the same density, but also has a minimum density, because it's in their downtown and they wanted, and the developer is arguing that the general plan and the zoning are inconsistent, and he doesn't have to meet the minimum density. So we're seeing something that initially seems fairly clear kind of being expanded in terms of arguments people are making.
What a reasonable person finds.
Yeah, right. Okay. So a project can be denied under the Housing Accountability Act, or the density reduced, only if the project doesn't comply with, quote, "objective standards" in your ordinances, or if it complies with all your objective standards, it has to result in a specific adverse impact on public health and safety. And that's defined as, the, all this language, right, "a significant, quantifiable, direct, unavoidable impact based on objective identified written health or safety standards, and the impact can't be mitigated." So I have not yet had a client that has felt able to make this finding. For instance, we were assisting a city where there were a lot of concerns that a certain project would increase evacuation time during a fire, you know, which you would view as a health or safety impact. But the city had no, adopted health, you know, public health or safety standards about evacuation. And so that, that problem could not be used to deny the project or require the density be reduced or anything else. I've tried to think about what might be an example, possibly if, if it didn't have access to potable water. I mean, I think it would have to be something, something on that level, you know, where there was no real solution to the problem before you could make this finding. And then the law also requires additional findings if a project has 20% lower income units, or if it's a, an affordable project. You have to make, be able to make one of these five findings. One is that the city has constructed all the housing that's been required under its regional housing needs. That's pretty difficult these days. The specific adverse impact finding, it doesn't comply with state or federal law. That might be an issue, for instance, if it didn't meet stormwater requirements. If it's proposed on ag land, or natural resource land, or the water sewer is inadequate, all these findings, by the way, are much more elaborate. Or it can be turned down if it's inconsistent with both, with both the zoning ordinance and the land use designation in the general plan. But to do that, a city has to have a housing element that conforms with state law, and the project can't be approved, can't be proposed on a housing element site. If it's proposed on a housing element site, site shown in your housing element, even though you haven't zoned yet for what's in the housing element, you can't, you can't turn down the project because the zoning hasn't been changed yet. So, sort of once the, by the way, congratulations in having a state-approved housing element. So a bit about what's an objective standard. So the definition in the statute is that it doesn't involve any personal judgment by a public official, and someone can verify it by referring to an external benchmark, like height, you know, number of feet, could be materials, you know, has to be Spanish, Spanish tile, something like that. You can't use a certain material. So typically, objective standards are things like density requirements, setbacks, floor area ratio, amount of lot that can be coverage, height limits. But subjective standards are, these are standards that courts have found to be subjective, reflecting the look and feel of the community, that site's not physically suitable for the use, has to be compatible with adjacent uses, because a court would say, well, what's the look and feel of the community? How is that defined? Now, you could adopt design standards that would say, in this community, you know, we want a certain architectural style, we want these materials used, we want sloping roofs, we want this, but it can't be anything that's as general as just the look and feel of the community. Same about compatibility with existing adjacent uses. What is physically suitable being, the city would need to define what that means. So this was, this was a case, it's Carla versus the city of San Mateo, where the court really explained how detailed the standard needs to be, to be considered an objective standard. So San Mateo had this provision in its design guidelines, that if the height varies by more than one story between buildings, a transition or a step in height is necessary. There was also some language talking about how it was a step back required in upper floors. And in this particular building, there's a single-story, single-family home to the right of the new development you can see. And at the hearing where this project was denied, the city attorney said, I think this is an objective standard. But the court disagreed, the Court of Appeal disagreed. So why did the court say this wasn't objective? They said, well, a transition could be trees in a trellis instead of a step back on the upper floors, if you can't really see that, but there was a trellis and a couple of trees there. And even if we accepted that it had to be stepped back, it wasn't clear how far they had to be stepped back, was six inches enough, did it have to be stepped back three feet? How far? And it wasn't clear how far along the building the step back had to run. Was it just in the front of the building, the whole length of the building? And it wasn't clear how many floors had to be stepped back. Was it every floor above, you know, the height of the adjacent building? Or was it just, you know, just maybe the top two floors? So that's the kind of specificity that the courts are looking for, to have a standard be called objective. And then the way the reasonable person standard played into this, this was not, this case did not necessarily have the best facts. The staff and the consultant had concluded that the project conformed to the standard, but the planning commission and the city council disagreed. And the court said both interpretations were reasonable, which it construed as meaning that it was an objective, because you could have two different interpretations. But under the reasonable person standard, either interpretation worked. So the reasonable interpretation that said it conformed is given priority, basically, and it must be approved. And in any Housing Accountability Act case, the burden of proof is on the city to show that its decision is correct.
Hold on one second, Barbara. I think Councilmember Kozlowski has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But he might be having technical difficulties.
Yeah, I can, I can speak up. So the...
I have one more slide, and then I'm coming to my questions. Could I do that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So the implications for Folsom or any city is there very tight timelines, and if timelines are missed, or somebody makes a mistake, it's, there's a big penalty to the city. There's a very strict standard for objective. Sequo does apply, so you can use that. And you can also use, one of the, one of the few good things about the case I just talked about is that if the city adopted some of these subjective standards, like look and feel of the community, before 2020, it can be used to apply conditions, but it can't be used to reduce the density or deny the project. So with that, I'm here.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm going to try and not be mined too far into the details. I happen to be an architect, and I happen to have gone through a lot of planning commission meetings in my history. Is the challenge here to create a set of written health and safety standards, potentially?
If there are...
Or is that a really kind of just window dressing and the rest of the objectiveness and reasonableness and, you know, all of the other, all the other adjectives that they used, does that really not leave that door open to use that as a limiting factor in development going forward? That's part A of my question. Part B of my question is, you mentioned some look and feel type standards that could be established. And I'm going to use an example that's, you know, extreme and kind of ridiculous, but we have a relationship with an Italian city as a sister city. And we have decided that going forward, all of our buildings
Uh-huh.
must be clad in travertine, one inch thick. And that in and of itself is not evident in the community right now, but we are determined to be Italian marble from here forward everywhere. Can we establish a objective standard like that without there being a preponderance of evidence that that is a look and feel that exists? Because you mentioned the Spanish tile as an example, right? That I can definitely find in California, but, you know...
I don't think there's exactly a limit on what, maybe just to back up a little bit...
Because I can write some very objective, you must use this material, you must use this color scheme, those types of things.
Right.
But I don't think that's what the law's really getting to.
Let's see.
Okay.
In terms of most of our clients, the effort I see them making is to develop objective design standards.
Right.
I haven't seen anybody talk about travertine, but often about how, how the buildings have to be, you know, you can't have a solid wall that's more than 50 feet long.
Form-based planning.
Form-based codes.
We're in the midst of doing that, yeah.
That, that seems to be where the effort's being made. Now, and I don't think there's a limit, you know, if Folsom decided it wanted to be an Italian-style city, I don't think, obviously, you might get some resistance from the public, but...
My extreme example is, is creating a design standard that would cause the construction to be so expensive that you would halt construction from happening.
There's another law, the Housing Crisis Act, that says a city can't adopt standards that would have the effect of basically reducing the amount of housing development in the city. Now, that's usually geared toward not only density, but things like height, you know, reducing the height limits, you know, really increasing the setbacks so you can build less, less development. Maybe something as extreme as what you're talking about, I think, you know, someone might challenge on that.
I was purposely choosing a ridiculous example.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
You could weaponize objective standards.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
You could, probably somebody would challenge you.
If I may add to that. Barbara also mentioned another law, and that is exactly why such extreme examples probably will not work necessarily, because we cannot establish standards that will render housing development infeasible, infeasible. So what does that mean? It's up to interpretation? Builders will probably tell you, it makes our project infeasible. It's up to the council, of course.
Yeah, I would suggest that the state of California has added things that have dramatically changed the cost of construction of housing, just in the building code, that we got along with just fine for millions of years, and now we have sprinklers, you know, automatic fire suppression systems within new houses, which is wonderful, but expensive.
Yeah, I could get into a, I could get into a philosophical discussion about some state laws that increase costs versus local, but...
My last question is, I think, a simple one, the, the effect of freezing the local standards, does that have any effect on state standards? So the building code could change even after you've made your preliminary application, and you'd be held to whatever the current thing is once you're under construction.
The preliminary application doesn't have any effect on state building codes, but there's another law, SP 35, if such a project were proposed, which does not seem to allow new building codes to be imposed.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm willing to buy you dinner and talk about this for seven hours. Not tonight, but...
Councilmember Kino, any questions?
No, Councilmember Kozlowski went exactly where I was, where I was going to say, it seems like you could just have extreme standards, where you'd say, we only allow one-story buildings.
Well, that one you couldn't do. That one you couldn't do, because the, as I mentioned, this housing, the Housing Crisis Act says that you can't take any action that would have the effect of reducing the amount of housing that can be constructed. So the travertine example, you know, is a little more difficult to parse out, but limiting everything to one story would be pretty clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Barbara, any questions? Council, Vice Mayor Chalam Charla, do you have any questions for Barbara?
Ah, no, mayor. I'm trying to understand by joining remotely.
Okay.
Yeah, must be late.
I have a couple of comments and questions. So we recently had a couple of projects that were a little contentious, and I think residents had attempted to use, I think, one of the reasons that you stated, that were sort of adverse, adversely affecting maybe a neighborhood. And it seems like, and the project went through the planning commission, and then it came to the city council because it was appealed, but it seems like we're processing these projects when they really should be, at this point, ministerial, to eliminate some of the, you know, the projects basically are going to get approved, or you deal with the consequences of lawsuits happening that are very costly to a city. So why are they not ministerial?
Well, the city has the option to make them ministerial if you want.
The city has an option.
The city has an option. The state hasn't done it. I would...
Do you see it coming?
Not quite, but close. You know, they're, they're making more and more things ministerial. But I think, and I think they've almost made projects that, you know, where a zone change, anything that doesn't require, say, a zone change or a general plan amendment, or some other kind of plan amendment, they have made it where it's almost, as you said, ministerial.
I mean, I watched, you know, this one particular one, I had followed in great detail as it went through the planning commission, and it seemed like either you approve it, or you deal with the consequences of lawsuits. And so then it was appealed, it came to us, and in the same, we were in the same position, either we approve it, or we deal with the lawsuit from one of, from, from the applicant or the developer. And so it just seemed as though it really has become very emotionally draining to residents who are being impacted, and very costly to a city, because now we're using staff time, where, you know, it's, it's going through the projects, but really, what it is, is it must be approved, or you deal with the costly, the costly consequences of lawsuits.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
I think, I think... I think it's put city councils in the position of facing the people that the legislature doesn't have to face.
Right, yeah.
In terms of the consequences of the statute.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I...
I mean, basically, what it does, I mean, it felt to me, this one particular one, that it gave residents a false hope that they can fight this, they can fight it. But the reality is, cities are faced with very expensive lawsuits that of funding we don't have to fight. And so I guess that leads me to my other question, the consequences. And so, you know, we heard from many residents, you know, "City of Folsom, be the first ones. Take charge. Fight this." You know, "City Council members, this is exactly what you got elected to do. Fight and do this." But the reality is that it's not that easy. It's not... We would be putting taxpayer money at risk, and basically, it's a lost cause, because the state of California says, "Approve it, or you have 60 days, and we're going to now charge you. You know, now we're going to fine you, and you have 60 days before we now fine you even more, you know, $50,000 per unit." So the consequences, has any city attempted to fight?
Well, San Mateo, in the lawsuit I just mentioned, you know, and they did, you know, and I don't think this city... It ended up being a much bigger case than this city expected, and the city was actually successful at the Superior Court level. The Superior Court upheld the city's decision and said that the agreed that it was an objective standard, but the Court of Appeal disagreed. So you can imagine, we were actually defending the city after the lawsuit was filed. Our advice to cities, frankly, is do everything you can to avoid denying a project or reducing the density. Better to apply a condition of approval, if you can come up with one, even if the applicant doesn't agree, because an applicant with an approval, even with a condition they may not agree with, is much less likely to sue. And there's a number of legal reasons why that puts the city in a better position, too. But we try to do everything we can to encourage people not to deny projects for that, because it's too risky. I have a section at the end about the consequences of, you know, about the legal consequences. And the truth is, cities have not been very successful in these lawsuits. They're very successful at upholding approvals against, in most cases, against community lawsuits, except sometimes under SECO, the Environmental Quality Act, but not at all successful in litigation, either attacking these laws or trying to defend denials. It's unusual.
Well, I came across many case studies where there are nonprofits that are pro-housing, that are basically looking for cities that are denying, and then following through with lawsuits, and then cities don't win.
I'll talk about that a little bit at the end.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. No, 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 no. It's fine. I mean, I... Yes, we've defended a number of those. Yeah.
My apologies. I thought your presentation was done. Sorry.
No. I'm sorry, this was just...
Got three more parts.
Got three more parts, and I'll try to be... I'll try to go fast. I was just going to say, the case I showed you with the step-back issue, that was fought entirely by one of the nonprofits, that was litigated entirely by one of the nonprofits, with the developer not involved at all or paying anything. So let me just go through things. So these are... This section, I'm going to talk in this section to the next about what the state requires that you approve. There's housing elements, the Housing Crisis Act, which I talked about a little bit, AB 2097 passed last year, which doesn't allow parking, two bills that go into effect July 1st, where housing may be built in commercial zones, accessory dwelling units in SB 9, which allow, as you know, units to be built in single-family lots. And what I think is the most significant bill, the density bonus law, where projects with sometimes even a minimal amount of affordable housing get not only increased density, but they can get waiver, a lot of waivers of development standards, unlimited number. So in your... In this particular cycle, the city was required to plan for about 6,300 units, which was a substantial increase from the last housing element. And again, congratulations. I mean, seriously, it's something like 10 or 12 communities in the entire Bay Area have approved housing elements out of about 100, you know, and most are going back time and time again to try to get them approved. Anyway, I think one of the more significant parts, though, of the housing law is what's called the no-net-loss law. So the city was required to plan for about 3,600, show that it had the capacity to accommodate 3,600 units on sites zoned at at least 30 units an acre. And if the sites are developed... So I'm not exactly sure how your housing element showed it, but let's say that a housing element, the housing element shows the site is either 100% affordable or 50% affordable, but the actual project that comes in is only 10 or 20, or maybe has no affordable units, then the city still has to show that it, regardless, that it has enough sites to accommodate, still to accommodate 3,600 lower-income units. And so I see that the... I saw in your... That there's a staff report that a number of sites are going to be upzoned so that at all times, the city can be sure that it has the capacity to accommodate 3,600 units, even though there may not be adequate funds to subsidize and build all those units. I saw in a recent report to the legislature that the state... That there's only been... There's only enough state dollars and tax credit dollars to subsidize 20,000 units a year. And in the... Looking at A-BAG, you know, the Bay Area, Southern California, San Diego, and the Sacramento area alone, the lower-income totals are about $870,000. So if you figure 20,000 a year over eight years, the eight-year housing element period, that's like 160,000 lower-income units. So there's just not enough money for every city to build all the lower-income housing that it's been assigned, no matter how diligent it is, or it can raise some local money, but it's not going to happen. So the no-net-loss is going to require a lot of upzoning and continued upzoning, as you've already experienced. I talked about the Housing Crisis Act a bit, that you can't reduce density below that that existed in 2018, unless you make... You can reduce it if you, in the same evening, increase density on another site, the equivalent amount. That's the only way you can do it. There also can't be any moratorium without HCD consent, and it has to be... They will only allow it if there's imminent risk to health and safety. So the only one I've seen them approve is where a city had a failing sewer line, which was indeed an imminent risk to health or safety. AB 2097. Now, this bill applies not only to housing, it also applies to commercial, it applies to any development project. And so if the project's within half a mile of either an existing or planned major transit stop, which would be, I think, include your light rail lines, you can't require or enforce parking requirements unless you do a study showing that not enforcing the requirements would have a substantial impact on several things, but mostly on residential or commercial parking within half a mile. But even if you do that study, you can't require parking for projects within half a mile of a light rail stop if they have at least 20% affordable or fewer than 20 These two bills, AB 2011 and SB 6, allow residential development...
Barbara, if I may, I apologize.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
So for benefit of the City Council, there is a project proposal in the historic district that will probably be presented to the commission sometime this year, yeah?
Yes.
Where this particular issue is going to be very controversial for the community.
Can you just restate the last part that you said about the... Unless the study shows a substantially negative impact on low or very low-rena housing needs?
Yeah.
I mean, that sentence is just... It feels a little clumsy.
You can... Yeah, I'm sorry. So the study... If the study shows what they call a substantially negative impact, which isn't defined, on one of these three things, you can require parking.
I see.
So it would show a negative impact on the ability to meet your regional housing needs.
Gotcha.
The housing needs of the elderly or disabled.
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, or...
I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly.
Yeah, or...
The fact that substantially... A substantially negative impact is not well-defined is extremely frustrating to me.
It's a substantially negative impact on parking, but yes.
Yeah, but what is that?
Well, in some ways...
But that's not objective. Your idea of substantial impact and mine are two different things, undoubtedly.
One of the ironic things is much of the state law is not objective.
I know. I know. This one is particularly problematic for us here in Folsom, so...
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. So as I was going to say, so these two bills will go into effect on July 1st, and they allow multifamily residential development in zones where commercial retailer parking are the principally permitted uses. And AB 2011 has a whole ministerial process. So it applies to multi... The project has to be a multifamily housing development project. It wouldn't apply to a single-family project. If you've developed what they call a neighborhood plan, which could be a specific plan, and it was adopted by January 1st of '22, or it's in progress as they... And adopted by January 1st of 2024, then if your neighborhood plan doesn't permit multifamily housing, your specific plan, it won't be allowed. That was a fig leaf for local controls, so gave, you know, if the city has done specific plans, it might protect those. The projects have to pay prevailing wages, and if developed under SB 6, that also requires union labor. AB 2011 requires affordable housing, but SB 6 does not. And no parking can be required, period, on these projects, except disabled parking, electric vehicle, and for bikes. If the project... There is... There is... These bills are like pages and pages long, so if you're really looking at this... At one of these projects, you'd really want to go through... For instance, the sites can't be within 500 feet of a freeway... I mean, the housing can't be within 500 feet of the freeway, and there's other provisions. It's also divided into two sections, where affordable housing projects have much looser regulations, but if it's a mixed-income project, has some affordable but mostly not, then it has to meet these requirements. And it established minimum densities. So the minimum densities range from 30 to 80 units an acre. And so the project has to meet those minimum densities. And then it also established height limits. One could be the currently permitted height, which might be higher, but it's defined height limits of 35 to 65 feet. And Steve mentioned, the city attorney mentioned, I used to be a planner, and the densities aren't really consistent with the height limits. 40 units an acre, for 40 units an acre, a 35-foot height limit is pretty low. You'd have to have tiny units. So I don't understand this, but that's... Those are some of the requirements that the legislature has put on. And then the one that I think is really the most significant, which is the density bonus law. So that allows a project with anywhere, which is with as little as 5% affordable housing, with 5% very low-income housing, it can get a 20% density bonus. Once it's eligible for a density bonus, even if it chooses not to get a density, get a density increase, it's entitled to anywhere from one to four incentive concessions, depending on the affordability, you know, the percentage of affordability. But what an incentive or concession does is it allows a developer to get basically a waiver or variance exception from a city standard that saves money. So one project I worked on, the developer didn't want to build a masonry wall next to the single-family area, and that saves money. A city can only deny one of these if it has evidence that the concession doesn't save money, basically. And so that can be very difficult to prove, or if it violates state or federal law, or again, if you can make the specific health or face safety finding, which is hard to make. A developer, once they're eligible for a density bonus, they're entitled to unlimited waivers of development standards, height, setback, design standards. And they're entitled to reduced parking requirements. If they don't qualify for any of these, if they're not within half a mile of a major transit stop, they're entitled to reduced parking requirements, depending on the location and on the percentage of affordability. And then the Housing Accountability Act says that a project requesting any of these under density bonus law is considered to be consistent with city standards. So if the city requires affordable units, it can qualify a project for a density bonus. The city's ordinance requires 3% very low and 7% low in low-income housing in for-sale projects, or it allows the developer to pay an in-lug fee. If the developer chooses to provide the units, it project qualifies for a 20% bonus, or they can get whatever else they want. This is a... I don't know if some of you saw this in The Chronicle. This is actually a proposed density bonus project in San Francisco.
Hot dog.
This might be, though, something that would be more likely for the city to get. This actually was a real proposed project in a suburban community where the height limit was three stories and the... Three stories and 39 feet, and the project proposed five and six stories and 60-some feet. And the project was slightly modified, but that project was essentially approved. So what are the implications? Cities ready, you know, you have to accept and approve these plans that conform with the state law, even if they're inconsistent with what the city wants and regardless of what the community thinks. I have time for Q and A here, but I could go through more if... Okay. Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know it's getting late. We talked about what a ministerial approval is, basically using only fixed standards. The big issue with a ministerial approval is they're exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And in most of these cases, the states impose strict timelines. So this applies to accessory dwelling units, which I know you're aware of, SB 9 projects allowing four units on a single-family lot, what's called... People still call this SB 35, streamlined review, and AB 2011 also has ministerial approval. The state keeps changing the laws regarding accessory dwelling units. The latest changes, you know, now allow the units to be 25 feet tall if they're attached, and anywhere from 16 to 18 feet tall if they're detached, and it's also put more restrictions on code enforcement. SB 9, I think, allows housing in single-family zones. There's another... There's a new law about those that would basically say that the city can't apply There's another, there's a new law about those that would basically say that the city can't apply standards to, under SB 9, that it doesn't apply to other single-family homes. That's a proposed, proposed legislation. SB 35 projects, so in Folsom, to qualify for SB 35, it has to be, has to have at least half, 50% lower income. So you're really talking about realistically 100% affordable project. Again, two-thirds of the square footage has to be residential. It can't be on a site where there was any rental housing in the last 10 years. If it has more than 10 units, it has to pay prevailing wages. And it's, and it's supposed to be consistent with objective standards. But somebody can request density bonus waivers or not, if not. I've seen a fair number of these projects in the Bay Area where people might be using union labor anyway. I think it really depends on finding a site that fits. And again, very short timelines. Staff has to do a review of consistency in 60 to 90 days and reach a decision in anywhere from 90 to 180 days. And that same process would be used for SB, AB 2011 if residential is proposed on a commercial site. Also, under your housing element, there'll be by right approvals, where basically the main, if that project has 20% lower income, and again, there's no review under the California Environmental Quality Act. So the implications, you know, fast timelines, big demands on the staff, limited community input. You can have public hearings on the AB 2011 and SB 35 projects, but they intend to be super frustrating, just as the mayor described to everybody, because there's really no, you know, and everybody has very little discretion. And I'll just talk, this was the, okay, so HCD and the Attorney General Enforcement. HCD has a housing accountability unit that has at least 25 staff. Somebody I know at HCD was just appointed as Director of Proactive Enforcement. They mostly right now respond to complaints. But now they're, they're going to look, they're, I think they're mostly looking at cities that haven't done what was said in their housing element. They typically, if they get a complaint, they'll send a city a letter of technical advice saying better do it or else, you know, better approve the project or else. If the city doesn't do what they say, they'll send a notice of violation. And then they can refer you to the Attorney General. The Attorney General has their own 12-person strike force to go after housing issues. And we've seen the Attorney General on his own right to cities and threaten litigation, even when HCD hasn't, hasn't raised an issue.
Well, he's been on the news, I think, twice in the last month, threatening two cities.
There's Huntington Beach, I know.
Yes, Huntington Beach, and I can't remember, close to Mesa, maybe? I don't know.
I don't know. Huntington Beach is sort of like, they're like, they're a little, should I say they're asking for? You know? Then there's these active third-party litigants, that's what you were referencing. So they've sued at least 10 Southern California cities and 12 Bay Area cities on their housing elements. But they're off, they often pile on. For instance, a city denies a project, the developer sues, and they file their own lawsuit in order to get some attorney's fees themselves, so. And then sometimes they handle the case entirely themselves, as I mentioned with the Sametao case. And in general, the courts are very, what I said before, very pro-housing. They uphold housing approvals. They usually overturn denials. And the city risks are, you have significant, all these laws say if you lose, you pay the attorney's fees. Defense costs are high to defend. And then we've been seeing developers also claim, make takings claims and other claims. So then it becomes more expensive to settle and more expensive to defend. So I'm done.
Since we got to the lawsuit threats, and a letter of technical advice is going to be my new go-to for threatening strongly worded letters. So, so circling back actually to the AB 2097. I think that I, I have imagined a future where we have a project come before us that is in our historic district, and it's within a half-mile of the light rail station that's in the historic district. And we are compelled to approve it without adding any parking for the benefit of that project specifically, or the area generally. And if we took this, if we took the position that there was.
A substantially negative impact.
Whatever kind of, if we felt like we could make an argument, there was a substantially negative impact, I think we risk being sued by the developer straight away. Because they might argue the opposite side of that.
Yeah.
And they, and that they're entitled to build without providing parking.
The reasonable person standard doesn't really apply to that. It's, it's in a completely different section of the, of the statute. So I'm not sure it would be that easy.
Not sure that it would be that easy to prevail?
No, I'm not sure it would be that easy to sue the city and be successful.
If we were able to identify a substantial negative impact?
Yeah.
Okay, so identifying that.
I mean, it all depends on what record you can create and what evidence you have.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's also the opposite future, where we choose to approve something and the residents in the vicinity sue us because we didn't find a substantially negative impact that they perceive.
They, it's really your option whether or not to do such a study. There's no requirement.
I, what I'm suggesting is that, that, so we have three light rail stations in Folsom. Two of them, the intent of that law suits those areas beautifully. And one of them, it is really going to be difficult. We are going to get sued by somebody regardless of whether we comply with the law or don't comply with the law, and how aggressive we are finding substantially negative impacts versus not finding substantially negative impacts.
And for the benefit of the council pertaining to this particular parking impact issue, the city has conduct, commissioners conduct parking studies in the past. And the record as it stands does not support any finding of substantial negative impact. But of course, a new study can be commissioned, and we, we can see.
We have been told that people, people constantly tell us they don't agree with our findings.
That, those are the people's opinion, where we're looking for the substantial evidence.
Yeah, so I guess I don't really have a question in there so much as the one-size-fits-all-ness of it is problematic drafting. And I spoke to the particular legislator who wrote this one and tried to explain the situation. And I got treated like gum stuck to that person's shoe, so.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's a substantially negative impact on existing residential or commercial parking within one-half mile of the housing development project.
Yeah, no, I'm intimately familiar with this one. I guess I'm just on my soapbox one more time.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody, for indulging me.
Thank you very much for the presentation. First, I want to compliment our staff, particularly the Community Development Department and the City Attorney's Office, because everything that you've just told us tonight is consistent with, with what they told us at this last appeal that we had here regarding housing. So that's, that's good. Are you familiar with this effort? A council member from Torrance is trying to get something on the ballot. They're calling it California Cities for Local Control. And I guess they're trying to get something on the ballot in November 2024 that would restore land use planning with local governments. Are you familiar with this effort?
I, I, there was a proposal before. I don't know if it's the same one. The one I saw seemed so extreme that it, you know, it was, yes, I'm somewhat familiar, but I don't know exactly what they're proposing right now.
I was just curious how familiar you are with it and the viability of it being successful and, you know, if it was something that we would want to sign on to, but, okay.
Yeah, I think you'd want to look at what the language was and what they're proposing now.
Okay, thank you.
Council Vice Mayor Chalam Charla, do you have any comments, questions?
No, ma'am, a lot of information.
All right.
Very educated.
Councilmember Roarbaugh stepped away. Well, I, I mean, I just have a couple of comments is, thank you for the information. This is very helpful. I actually asked some questions that I kind of knew the answers to. But what I want to do in the future is, is be able to have the public or members of, you know, members of the public and residents refer back to this meeting, because it's very educational. And I think that's what the public currently needs is education, because I, I think that, you know, I, I understand. I get it, the frustrations of, we see, you know, hundreds of apartments going up, and, and we want, you know, single-family resident homes. And so it, what people are seeing gives them a bit of angst, because many, who, many of my neighbors, see, I moved here because it was a small town. I moved here because, because of the quaintness of this, of this city. And now we're being bombarded, and it's the city council that is executing on all these apartments that are going up. And that's not the truth. That's, I think it's people's perception of what is happening, but it's not. It's the state of California really truly imposing these housing requirements on cities. And we're left with really, you know, our, no potential to really fight back. And that's what people want us to do, and we just don't have the ability or the funding to be able to do it successfully where we're going to win. And so I, I thank you for all the information that you have provided. And this is going to be very useful for members of the public to go back and review and know that it's not the council that is, you know, driving it. It is really the state of California.
I mean, it's fine if the city attorney agrees to have the PowerPoint on, yeah, posted on the city's website.
Yeah, very good.
And now the mayor, just as Barbara indicated, most of the efforts are, are geared towards establishing objective standards, so that we can actually have some standards that we can enforce. Another effort is to impose reasonable conditions of approval, so that even if we have to approve those projects, hopefully those conditions will mitigate some of the community's angst, and maybe provide additional bridge between the community, the community's opposition and the actual project that will be built later on.
All right. Any, that's it?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Barbara. This is very educational and good information.
Thank you.
All right, well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is council requests for future agenda. Oh, no, it's not. Back up. Sorry. I forgot we were on scheduled presentations. Folsom Plan Area Semiannual Report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Pam Johns, Community Development Director. And Steve Cronin, I, City Engineer, will be presenting just a brief overview. It's, this is the semiannual report on the Folsom Plan Area Development Activity. And we'll keep it to about 10 minutes, in part because of the interest of time, it's so late, but also because things are just moving along as planned. So in the activity that you'll see and hear about this evening, it really is based on a lot of the planning and engineering and building work that had, you know, started back in, in 2011 and is just continuing. So I'm going to spend just a minute or two highlighting the planning activity over the last six months. We had four development applications. That's lower than, you know, the same period, you know, a year ago. But we have had some pre-applications, informal pre-applications for the Town Center. And I'll point to that area. So here I'm listing, you know, Alder Creek Apartments, PD permits, some design review for single-family subdivisions, and then the kind of Phase 3 of Toll Brothers subdivision design. But we've been doing preliminary application discussions for the Town Center and also some of the development activity that's occurring on Parcel 61 and 77 surrounding UC Davis. You know, I think that you've seen some of the discussions we've had relative to the density changes and zoning changes that might occur. And I think that will certainly also potentially spur some activity moving forward. But in the current report out of the last six months, it has not been as active as it has been in the, in the past. We had Planning Commission Act on three entitlements that are listed here. Apartment project with the DA amendment. This is the Town Center-type apartment project that's next to the Dignity Health Site, fire station design review, and then residential design review in Russell Ranch. And then I'm going to just highlight, just show you some of those slides. But you've seen all of these in the recent past, or, you know, they, some of these came to the City Council as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Cronin to talk about infrastructure site engineering and building.
Good evening, council members. Steve Cronin, City Engineer. I'm going to go through briefly the last portion of this presentation. And, and as always, feel free to interrupt or ask questions during my presentation. I'm perfectly fine with that. So this is kind of a general overview of what's been going on out there. It's been a frustrating five months, really from November through March. The project was essentially shut down. There was a lot of significant progress made last summer, but the weather, temperatures in that five-month period really brought everything kind of to a, to a halt. But in April, beginning of April, the last three weeks, we've seen a significant resumption in the activity out there, and some of these projects that were held back are moving forward at a brisk pace at this point. This is kind of a general overview of what's going on out there. Here's a summary of the small lot. We have over 4,300 lots mapped now, final mapped lots that could have residential structures built on those. And over time, that, that will occur. We only have two, two final maps in, in review for Toll Brothers Phase 1A, which is their model home complex, and 3B. But we expect a few more later this summer and into the fall. This is kind of a general overview of the building permit activity. It is fairly generally slow from last October of '22 until January of '23. We are averaging between 20 and 25 permits a month. Since that, we had 47 in February, and in March, we were up to 65, I believe. So we're seeing a little bit of increase in the activity of building permits in the last couple of months. And we expect that number to generally remain between 40 and 80 probably in the next six months. That's the plan, anyway. These are neighborhoods. This is Mangini Phase 1. Vandale Apartments is under construction. You probably noticed it out there from East Bidwell or White Rock Road. The Bungalows has been approved, but they're back resuming with underground. Their site was pretty wet, and it's drying out now, so they resumed. And then 1C North is TriPoint. And then the, the remaining portion of 1C South will be underway here probably in the next two weeks. And that will also include the construction of Savannah Parkway from Mangini Parkway to White Rock Road. So we're anxious to see that get started and complete that roadway segment. Here's kind of the model home complex for Mangini Phase 1C North and 1E. This is TriPoint, Villages 1 through 4. Those models are open and have been open for a couple of months, I believe. Neighborhood site activity for Mangini Phase 2. The future school and park site is there. The fire station is resumed construction. If you have been out there, the second elementary school is underway. School District is grading the site, and I think they're going to be close to finishing grading here in the next week. So that's underway. Here are the builders in Mangini Phase 2 are still KB Homes, TriPoint, and Beezer Home and Village 3. We just issued their model home permit, so you'll see that activity. And you'll have access to the site with the completion of Savannah Parkway north of East Bidwell, which we expect to open up to traffic probably early next week. Mangini Phase 3, this is on the west side of East Bidwell. That's Taylor Morrison has all of these lots. They have started their models, and they should be open here and complete. I would assume probably in the next two to three weeks, you'll be able to get out there and take a look at those as well. This is Taylor Morrison. Here's their models. They're almost completed with their model home complex. This picture was taken today, and they're getting close. Parcel 61 and 77, as well as Parcel 85. Parcel 67, 61 and 77 is UC Davis. We're expecting them to get started sometime in June, so you'll see some activity out there on that site. They're, the developer is rapidly constructing those improvements to allow that to occur. And then Parcel 85 is in the foreground there, and they're, they're. And their infrastructure improvements are underway, and we expect them to be completed late summer of this year. Here's an overview of Russell Ranch Phase 3 in Broadstone Estates. Broadstone Estates is Elliott Homes. They finished their grading and we're looking forward to them resume construction here in the next month. They haven't resumed, but we assume that they would in the near future. Russell Ranch Phase 3, they're building in now the lower portion closer to Placerville Road. And Phase 3A, which is above the hill, they've almost issued all the permits in that portion of the development already. And here's a new area that they're going to be building homes in now. The models are under construction as well is Russell Ranch Phase 2. It's kind of blocked off at Mangini Parkway right now except for construction traffic. But probably in the next two months, that area will be open. The models will be open. And you'll start seeing people moving out there in the next two or three months. Here are those model homes out there in Russell Ranch Phase 2. All of them are Lanar Homes, as well as 3A and 3B. Those are the models that are not quite open, but they're getting very close. This is Toll Brothers Project. They're back under construction. They were hit particularly hard with the weather because a lot of their, they had really good soil out there, a lot less rock and good soil. So they observed a lot of the water, and they're just now getting dry enough to start work. So you'll start seeing them completing the improvements over the next months. We expect by the middle of summer, probably by July, we'll have Mangini Parkway open all the way to Oak Avenue Parkway, the weather permitting. Here's that same model home complex that they're using for basically the Regency Project. I'd like to add, though, that the Phase 3 portion out towards Oak Avenue Parkway is actually a traditional subdivision. It's not part of the age-restricted Regency Parkway, Regency Project. But they're, want to get started with those models probably in the next three weeks. The fire station is under construction, I believe, back moving forward. City Parks, I think Prospector Park will be getting started here very soon. And as well as trail construction will be, city-funded portion will be moving forward, I think, sometime later this year. This is just an overall view. This is the bridge that's going to go across Alder Creek for Alder Creek Parkway to serve the sewer line that will serve UC Davis. The abutments are done, and they're actually constructing the bridge now. And that's moving forward, making good progress on that. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I will answer them.
Steve, I have a, this came up last meeting during Business from the Floor, and I know you've spoken to this resident, but maybe for everybody else's benefit, you could just explain what's happening with East Bidwell right now? Because there has to be a significant elevation change, correct?
Yes. East Bidwell is constructed on two different fronts. The portion that's moving forward at a much faster pace is that portion between Alder Creek Parkway and White Rock Road. That's moving forward. They're starting those improvements and they're moving pretty rapidly. And so that portion of East Bidwell between Alder Creek and White Rock should be completed in July. What's going to lag a little bit will be that portion that's between the freeway and Alder Creek Parkway. The road has to come up. We have to build those improvements south of the intersection that are being built now in order to shift traffic back and forth to build both sides of that section of roadway. But they're moving forward on it. Just this last week, they opened it back up. It was all filled, so it was saturated. This last week, they tore it up again, and now they remade subgrade, I think, today or tomorrow. So they'll start moving forward on there. And the idea is to pave that one side, the southbound side, the west side. They'll pave that, move traffic over to that to build the other side. So that will be able to work in conjunction with that construction that's going on south of the intersection. But it has to be coordinated between two different developers, and they're working on trying to complete that. They'll finish the signal. At the same time, there'll be a new signal being constructed at Savannah Parkway and his Regency Parkway as well. We've just approved the plans for those, so you'll start to see those become an impulse likely in the fall or early first quarter of next year when those signals will be activated. So by the middle of the summer, long story short, the roadway should be fairly complete between Alder Creek by the middle of summer, all the way to White Rock, with two lanes in each direction. The portion between Alder Creek and the freeway will lag a little bit, but hopefully by the fall, that will be open as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Vice Mayor Chalamterla, any questions or comments for Steve?
Um, ma'am, I just have one question, Steve. This you may or may not know, but I just wanted to ask this one. We talked about the roundabout, and we have visited, you know, outside states, and we got some information. Even people listening to Mark's presentation, it is a more favorable, I'm not saying that this council approved. Do you see any discussions in the community, builder community, at least in the future, the roadways are planning for that side?
I don't see any currently planning for it. I know that the intersections along East Bidwell are going to be constructed with standard signalized intersections. I think any opportunity for roundabouts would be to west of East Bidwell and if new development. I think it's something that needs to be considered early on in the entitlement process in order to secure the rights of a way and those types of things in order to build it. But it would certainly be an opportunity in areas that haven't already been constructed or already entitled and that are under construction.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. I know you are giving us one to the six months, which is absolutely okay. But, you know, at least sending some strong message, I don't know how that is. I know we didn't approve it. This council hasn't approved it. But by the time, you know, we approve, they already moved ahead and they already can, it may be too late for them to come in. That's what I'm thinking. Informal socializing and that's what.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, the clerk, please call the next item.
The next item is council requests for future agenda items.
Don't hear, Vice Mayor Chalamterla, do you have any requests for future council items?
Yeah, I do. This one is about the grant process. I know every department in our city, we try to ask for grants, and we try our best to put the best application either at the city level or at the state level or federal level. You know, it's a good idea to centralize with some oversight, senior leadership, like the way Elaine is giving, Marcus is procurement oversight person helping her, revisiting the grant application process, our success rate, and doing some debugging if we are not getting that grant. Why? Because there is a lot of money out there at the state and federal level. Is there a presentation or a workshop or a thought we can bring this to the council agenda?
Vice Mayor Chalamterla, I'll follow up with you once you're back from Washington, DC, and perhaps try to narrow that topic a bit because, so we can discuss what types of grants you're specifically, or, you know, what dollar amounts you're talking about? Because it's a pretty broad topic, and I want it to be a productive conversation. So we'll talk once you're back.
Okay. I'm open on that.
And Elaine, you and I have had many conversations on the grant process, even with Mark. And, you know, I think often, I think because we don't fall under the high, low socioeconomic needs, it has an impact to the grant process. And, yeah, so there are pros and cons. Anyways, YK, I've had really several conversations with Elaine recently on grants. And so, yeah, she has a lot of good information for you.
We'll talk.
All right. Anything else? No? Okay. Well, the clerk, please call the next item.
City Manager Reports.
Thank you very much. The Folsom Public Library will close for carpet replacement from May 9th to May 25th. The library will reopen on Friday, May 26th for the beginning of the Summer Reading Challenge. The new carpet will ensure the library is a beautiful and welcoming space for the community. The Georgia Murray Building, where the library is located, opened in February 2007. In the 16 subsequent years, it has averaged 800 visitors a day, making a total of 3.5 million visits by residents and visitors. And those 7 million feet have worn down the carpet in high-traffic areas. So look forward to new carpet there. The City of Folsom Parks and Recreation Department has begun a feasibility study for a new bicycle and pedestrian bridge over Folsom Boulevard between Blue Ravine Road and Glenn Drive to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety and close a gap in the Humbug Willow Creek Trail System. We encourage anyone interested to fill out an online community questionnaire available between April 24th and May 12th at www.folsom.ca.us/trails. The 10th Annual, I can hardly believe that, 10th Annual Community Service Day takes place on Saturday, September 16th. This major citywide event mobilizes thousands of volunteers to complete dozens of service projects throughout Folsom. June 30th is the deadline to submit your project idea for consideration. A variety of sponsorship opportunities are also available if you call Gen TO in Public Works, who was here earlier, at 461-6712. And you can find out more information about the event in general at folsomcommunitieservice.org. Learn how to optimize your drink drip and sprinkler system and reach maximum water efficiency at a free workshop on Thursday, May 4th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, right next door at the community center. And you can learn more at water conservation at folsom.ca.us. And finally, the 9th Annual Love My Mom 5K and Kids Dash takes place Sunday, May 7th. This popular event celebrates family and community and is presented by Folsom Parks and Rec in partnership with the Paladio and Kaiser. Volunteers are still needed to help direct runners distribute medals and provide finish line cheer. Learn more and register at our website, folsom.ca.us. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Borba?
Yes, I just have a couple of thank yous. I joined the Friends of Folsom Parkways with the city partnership, doing some trails maintenance and convenient, it was on April 15th. It was a lot of fun meeting some people throughout the city. But it was super fun because they did my area right across my house. So every day I get a look at the trees that are trimmed, and it's certainly beautiful. So I love those kind of days. I wish we did more of them because it just brings the community together. So, and then I just want to say it was such a treat and honor to be at the Police Department, Folsom Police Department's awards and promotions. There was a lot of promotions. I believe there were 17, 18. And a lot of medals and recognition, and the stories that came along with those were absolutely amazing. They're very efficient at their meetings, so it was in and out in an hour after lunch. And I just, I'm thrilled that there are PD, and we have such great people in it. So I just want to congratulate every single one of them and all the people that supported the winners and the people that got the promotion and the process, and especially their friends and families. So that's it. Thank you. Oh, and also, we won't meet before Mother's Day, so happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Aquino?
Yeah, I have a few things. On April 13th, I hosted a few people for lunch in Folsom. I had Mayor Tim Schaefer from Citrus Heights, Mayor Bruce Howderschelt from Roseville, and Councilmember Karina Talamontis from City of Sacramento. Kevin Spees from Elgro wasn't able to come. But one of the things we all have in common is we all represent District 3 on our respective city councils. And so it was just an opportunity to, you know, just kind of build relationships, share best practices, all that kind of stuff. And it was very gratifying to hear Mayor Schaefer from Citrus Heights say that his wife and he and their granddaughter came ice skating in our historic district this past year. And Mayor Howderschelt from Roseville saying that he wants them to close their street in their downtown like we do on Sutter Street. So kudos to FHDA and our city staff who continue to make those things happen. As the mayor mentioned a few meetings ago, CDCR, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, wants to put a male community reentry program at the former Folsom Women's Facility on the Folsom State Prison Grounds, otherwise known as an MCRP. And so last Monday, I traveled to Oroville in Butte County to visit the MCRP there. Very eye-opening and took a lot of information back from that. And then last Friday, CDCR graciously allowed representatives from the City of Folsom, including myself, Commander Bates, and Jim Silva, who sits on our Citizens Advisory Committee for the prisons, to be there when nine potential vendors came through the facility. So it was an hour and a half where they got to walk through the facility and see how they would want to transform it. And then another hour and a half of Q and A. Normally, they don't let city representatives come, but we have been persistent. So they let us be a fly on the wall, so that was good. I would like to ask the city manager at some point that we do ask CDCR to come make a formal presentation to the City of Folsom with their plans so that my colleagues can be fully aware of what's happening and so the public has an opportunity to weigh in.
Sure.
We can talk about timing on that, but they may want to wait until their provider has been chosen. As far as some of my regional committees, Regional Sanitation is talking about making some changes to their sewer impact fees, which would affect new connections to the lines, so basically new construction. So there was a PowerPoint presentation that we got at the last meeting. So Marcus and Pam, if you haven't seen that, I did forward it to the city manager. And then finally, I had my first meeting as the representative of the city on the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor, JPA, which is basically the rail JPA. Apparently, I drew the short straw and I am the chair of that. But just wanted to let you all know that the license agreement between the JPA and the Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad comes up for renewal at the end of this year. And so at our May meeting, we're going to have some conversations about, there are different options for the license renewal, what are some of the requirements from the Federal Railroad Administration as far as improvements to the track, all that kind of stuff. And then we will make a decision at our November meeting. So in the meantime, I am talking to folks. I am walking the rails, just doing my research. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Right on. Councilmember Kozowski?
I think it's working. Just a couple of quick things also. SECOG, at our meeting last week, our regular meeting, we got a full presentation on the three growth options that are being considered as part of the blueprint planning that's ongoing there. For those that are unfamiliar with SECOG out there in the vast audience for our meetings, SECOG's principal job in the world, the Sacramento Area Regional Council of Governments, is distributing transportation funds. Along with that comes all of the strings that are attached to transportation funds, many of which are about vehicle miles traveled, which acts as a proxy for greenhouse gas emissions. And so it dips its foot into local planning, or we all do it together, so that we try and curb the amount of additional pavement that we pay to take care of every year, and we hopefully drive less to and from work. So that's, if that's of interest to you, there's going to be a workshop here in Folsom at the community center on June 16th from 8:30 to noon. The three options, while based on lots and lots of information, are not final in any way. It's not a choose one of these three kind of things, although you might get asked to say which you prefer. There's an enormous amount of work that needs to happen over the next three years, probably two years, to actually finalize whatever the blueprint says. So that's happening. Also in SECOG News, our planning staff agreed to come make a presentation on our development of a form-based code to the Land Use Committee of SECOG at our next land use meeting. So you can find the schedule for that meeting and all of the presentations that happen down at SECOG at secog.org. The FHDA, I also want to extend a thank you to them for their ongoing work. I was at their most recent board meeting, and they are already working on the ice arena for this year. So the donut is coming back. And then finally, a bunch of us were able to be at a kind of kickoff fundraiser event for the Folsom History Museum. A very, very generous donor who has been generous in the past made a large donation to the history museum in order for them to be able to create an additional community space on the back of the history museum and continue with the good work that's happening down there to make that whole complex of Pioneer Village and the Chinese History Museum that's on its way and our regular history museum more vital and interesting and active. So, thank you, Claudia Cummings.
It's interesting because we were, it was on the history, but, you know, Cummings Properties has a long history of being very generous donors to the City of Folsom. Yeah. Vice Mayor Chalamterla?
Yes, Mayor. I start with thanking Mike Miller, our consultant here at Washington, DC, for accommodating DC, for accommodating his place. It is almost twelve thirty, midnight. He's so kind enough to give me. I want to thank Elaine. You can probably formally pass that message, even though I'm going to share that same.
I will. Thank you.
Right. And Cap to Cap is almost ending. Tomorrow is the last day. It's, I think, Rosario, our mayor, went last year. It is a very, very productive regional collaboration meeting. And I'm part of the Water Committee and Economic Development Committee. To highlight, I quickly want to update groundwater bank for dry season. That probably, we are going to get more wind to that one and some success. We put a lot of pressure with a couple of senators, and they are in favor of it somewhere in Sacramento region groundwater bank. And the Economic Development Committee, the one I focusing more on, there are so many things they are focusing, CHIP and the Science Act. It is very big at the Hill here. They want to retain the technology companies in this country, not moving too much manufacturing to outside United States, so they are making a huge investment. That's definitely going to help. Sacramento region is specifically Folsom region because of the CHIP that we have at Intel, Micron, AMD is looking, that one. More news to come on those two ones. So those are the good two items for Folsom groundwater bank. It's, you know, in a dry season, I know we usually struggle because of the surface water. And the third item, I think Elaine gave us an update about our congressman, Mr. Kylie. He is putting a four or five million dollar grant request for a community improvement project. I personally thank him. I emphasize that one here at his office at the Capitol Hill. Those are the three highlights. When I come back next time, probably I may have more. And on a side note, I think a Folsom Garden Tour is happening this twenty-ninth and thirtieth. There's a large group of people visiting Folsom to tour, about ten houses garden tour. That brings, you know, some shopping and some people standing in restaurants, from outside cities. It's a good one. If Folsom, you are listening, you know, please buy the ticket for Folsom Garden Tour. It's a wonderful one. And the last one, I know I have been attending this meeting for the last couple of hours, virtually, I see the difficulty. I think I highly recommend my colleagues making this a video on virtual meetings, even for public. I know we were there. After pandemic, we take out, but I can see it personally, the challenges when the presentations are happening, when the proclamations are happening, even for public. I just want to put that out there as a request, because I'm personally experiencing right now. If I'm one of the residents, probably they may be struggling as well. Because all other boards, we are, you know, I am being, you know, packed up. They all have a video on virtual conference capability. And the last one, a mayor for you as a request, you know, one of the seasoned resident, and teacher, and coach for our Folsom football, Joseph Lansky. He passed away at the age of eighty. He is Chris Richardson, a Folsom Bulldog Coach, father-in-law. I was there in that ceremony before I came to Washington, DC. If, with your permission, if you can close this meeting in the honor of Mr. Joseph Lansky, Coach.
Can you spell his last name?
L A S H I N F K Y.
S K Y. L A S H I N.
Is he saying that's Coach Richardson's father-in-law, I think?
Chris Richardson.
Yes.
Father-in-law.
Okay. What was that? Joe, Joseph?
I think they call him Bulldog Joe.
Bulldog Joe, that's right.
Bulldog Joe, can I close him?
Yeah.
All right.
You are more than welcome to close Bulldog Joe. Everyone was calling him on that day, Bulldog Joe. With that, I think, you know, thank you, team, for sending me here a sign to the Cap to Cap. This is a wonderful experience. I'll have more for you. Folsom, thank you and good night.
Thank you. Yeah. We're getting updates on Cap to Cap from Fox forty, and I just want you to know that I'm having serious FOMO. Okay, so mine's, this coming week is the California Jazz Competition taking place in the Historic District. It's a two-day event taking place this Saturday and Sunday. The event is to mirror a European-style jazz festival. So for all you jazz lovers, this is a place to be to check out this weekend. Feature Folsom is this coming Thursday morning at the Paladio Cinema. Tickets are still available through Choose Folsom. This gives great insight into what is coming down the pike with the City of Folsom and Choose Folsom. The very first Farmer's Market will take place on Sutter Street on Sunday, May seventh, from nine to one PM. That is, this is something that is new. And then a reminder to all that May is Bike Month, starting on May first. There are some great opportunities in the City of Folsom to get out on your bike and enjoy the trails that we have in Folsom. The Friends of Folsom Parkway is sponsoring a photo contest for all you photographers out there. The Friends invite you to take pictures of all things Folsom trail-related, as well as depicting bikes using our trails. Go to the Friends of Folsom website at www.frosofalsomparkways.org for more information on the photo contest. The Friends of Folsom also encourages riders of all ages to get out and ride their bikes on the trails. And on Saturday, May sixth, there are some great bike activities, the Historic District. The Balanced Bike Bash looks like a fun event for young kiddos. There's also a Parking Rec Commission open. For those interested, you can apply to the city's website, and the deadline is May fifth. Sprint contracts are returning with the first one on Thursday, May fourth, at Zittle Amphitheater. And something I forgot to add when we were talking about the Governance Handbook, that in order to do good governance, oftentimes, you know, city staff really is a big part of that. And Elaine, I just want to say that, and I know you already know that, but as I work closely with them, we have an incredibly excellent executive management team who are truly experts in their fields, and I have to tell you how much I appreciate them. Oftentimes, I'll get, you know, information will come to me, questions, and I get information right back so quick, and it really does make us look incredibly sharp when we get, you know, very professional expertise, knowledge that, so anyways, going back to your Governance Handbook, it really is an excellent staff, truly does compliment us when we talk to the public.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that said, I also want to thank Alison Garcia, who spent some time with me last week, talking on details of contracts, and so that was a really good time spent. She is a sharp cookie. Man, there's, she's a quiet powerhouse, but you sit down and it's like, she's so good.
I heart Alison Garcia.
Yes, she's excellent. And then also, I want to share that your interim city manager, Marcus Jasotaki, took care of some really important business yesterday, because there was a foul smell of, a really horrible smell that was for about fifteen minutes, and I sent him a text and said, hey, Marcus, you know, there's this horrible smell coming down Sutter Street. It's, it's like, it was smelled bad. And then I didn't know what it was, and then, so I just texted him first, and then I went outside, I looked, and then there were people already sort of, you know, like, just saying, oh, my gosh, it's so bad, and ended up being porter potties. And then I thought, oh, my gosh, did these porter potties spill, and these people left. And so anyways, he did a really great job in addressing that issue.
Marcus is an ace smell detector, in addition to being the acting assistant city manager.
He did. Great job. And then also, just on STA, I am on an additional funding resource committee. STA is now looking at, probably like many other agencies, looking for additional funding, and it's interesting, because some of the challenges that STA has is very similar to some of the projections that we have here with the City of Folsom. So anyways, with that said, we will close the meeting at nine forty-one PM. Have a great night, everybody.